I'd like to call this meeting-
This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call this meeting of July 20th, 2020, to order. This time, we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we get started with the roll call, I'd like to remind everybody to please mute your microphones at home. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers, Alunbus-
Rhythm?
Engels?
Here.
King?
Here.
Mayor Foulkes?
Here. At this time, look for a motion to approve the agenda. It has been amended.
I make a motion to approve the agenda. Alunbus?
Can you state the amended?
Amended to add acceptance of locations for public art in the Cadillac Arts Council under communications as item 4-F.
Thank you.
This is Councilmember King. I support that motion and amendment.
Councilmember Alunbus?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers? Mayor Foulkes?
Yes. Motion carries. At this time, we're going to open the floor for public comment, and I would like to remind everyone that public comment is an opportunity for you to address the council. It is not an opportunity for us to enter into discussion. And so, that's just a gentle reminder. And so, we'd also ask if you would like to speak during public comment, that you state your name. And remember that you have three minutes. And in this online technology, everyone is going to be muted after the three minutes. I'm not hearing anybody answering into public comment, but I'm hearing a lot of background noise. So again, if you would please mute your microphones as we progress in the meeting. Thank you. This moves us to the approval of the consent agenda. And this evening, we do have the minutes from our last meeting that was held on June 15th, 2020, along with the minutes from the closed session from June 15th, 2020. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
This is Councilmember King. Support.
Councilmember Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers? Alunbus?
Yes.
Mayor Foulkes?
Yes. Motion carries. And this evening, we do have several communications. Sandy, would you like to get started with those?
Sure. The first request is to approve the serving of alcoholic beverages at the market from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. on July 31st, 2020 for a retirement party hosted by the Cadillac Family Positions.
I would like to make a motion to approve the serving of alcoholic beverages at the market from 5:00 to 11:00 p.m. on July 31st, 2020 for a retirement party hosted by the Cadillac Family Positions.
This is Councilmember King. I would support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers? Alunbus?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
Mayor Foulkes?
Yes. Motion carries.
The next request is to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from August 14th to 16th, 2020 at the times requested. And to approve the display of a banner from August 10th to the 17th, 2020 for the Call to All Family Festival.
Alunbus here. I'd make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from August 14th to the 16th, 2020 at the times requested. And the display of a banner from August 10th through 17th, 2020 for the Call to All Family Festival.
This is Councilmember King. Support.
Councilmember Shippers? Alunbus?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Foulkes?
Yes. Motion carries.
The next request is to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from 6:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. on Thursdays from July 23rd to August 27th, 2020 for Outbeat Cadillac.
Mayor and members of the city council, this is Marcus, your city manager. Just wanted to also mention that this afternoon, the event organizer has provided with a one-pager explaining a variety of protocols they intend to put into place in regards to COVID-19, which is great to see. They have also, however, requested as a part of the information regarding their COVID-19-related type protocols, request to limit parking along Lake Street to about a half a dozen cars for handicap parking purposes. The city in the past has not allowed for parking along Lake Street to happen due to concerns about potential pedestrian versus motorist or motorist versus pedestrian conflicts in that area. But certainly, this would be the time for council to revisit that prior sort of policy decision when closing Lake Street for this event, should you wish to allow it.
Well, they parked there anyway.
But that doesn't mean that they should be parking there.
Right. They're not supposed to, but they do regardless. Yeah.
Well, right.
But maybe it's time to, I would say, change it.
I don't know if I agree with that. From a safety perspective, I think when we've talked about it in the past, there was concern with, you know, the foot traffic and kids going to those events, that we certainly don't want something to happen at that event or any event. And if we open it up for that event, then it's going to be asked to be considered for all events. And so, I'd just like to think about that.
Does our public safety director have any thoughts in relation to that one that we should consider?
Since he's sitting here.
What is the specific area that you speak?
It's the Lake Street where, when they put up the barricades from Harris Street to Cass Street, they want to be able to pull in there and park.
Sorry, Director, you got to use the mic by the phone.
Okay.
Sneak in here for a sec. The area is Lake Street between Harris and Cass. Prior recommendations from staff have been to not allow parking there due to concerns about motorist versus pedestrian or pedestrian versus motorist conflict because that area is closed down to motorized traffic so pedestrians feel comfortable moving in and out. Their request is to allow for handicap folks to park there is the only exception, which we have, we have in the past asked people to move their cars when they have been parking there inappropriately.
And in the work on the commons, we actually provided more handicap parking spaces down closer to the pavilion for that very reason, right down by the locomotive and then off into the side.
Some of that property is also owned by the railroad right there, correct?
Yeah, but not Lake Street.
Not Lake Street, no.
So I, you know, the less traffic and mix of pedestrians and traffic, obviously, there is a risk of somebody being moved.
No, there is a limited amount of people. I go to those concerts. I also work for the city and was down there working at times. And it's been an ongoing complaint from elderly people with handicap, and they can't even make, barely make the walk from where they can park, or maybe they just want to sit in their cars. It is a problem. We would need someone on staff to guide the car in. That's true, for safety purposes. Yeah, that's a very valid point. So who do we, you know, it's been there for years and they've complained for years. There's usually only three or four cars. It's not, as soon as I say that, there'll be 15. But usually, there's three or four.
Right. And that's why when we were working on the commons, we've heard that, those concerns for years.
They're so, they're so immobile that they have a hard time getting out of the car, just getting that far.
I understand.
Yeah. So it's, I see your point about safety. I've listened to way a lot of the seniors complain about that. So there's your, there's both sides of the story.
That's the, and the city, I should say, doesn't have the staff on hand to work the event.
Yeah, you got the one person running it.
There would have to be an event organizer having somebody there to manage the traffic.
Yeah, I have volunteers that, I have volunteers that would help.
I believe that's probably the event organizer.
Tim Scully.
Is that you, Tim?
Yeah, I would, yeah, that's me. I would, I would request that you allow this. We will have volunteers that will help as far as in and out for, and it's just a selected few that are, they've been our sponsors for 25 years and they can't get out of the cars anymore. They really have a lot of trouble. And now, I've secured a frequency, we're going to be broadcasting to vehicle radios, 99.3, the concerts, and it's just an immediate area there. So even people could be parking on the other side of the park, stay in their cars and still hear the concert, or over south of the park or wherever. And so, I'm just, I'm concerned about some of our donors that have been true sponsors and all these years, and Don Lakens is one. And there's a couple of other ones that I'm really concerned about. They had a hard time last year. And I want to try to just accommodate them, especially with the safety concerns this year.
Okay. Thank you, Tim, for that. And I do want to take a minute too, to say thank you to you, Tim. I think that this concert series is really important to people, so I appreciate your efforts to bring it back and to keep people safe by coming up with these list of proposed protocols for the event. So thank you.
Is, is there a way to-
And I appreciate the-
What I was going to say, is there-
Appreciate the mayor and the council people's consideration.
Is there a way to accomplish this? I know with Back to the Bricks, there was a partnership with CWTA that had a golf cart one of the years that they used to transport people. With, with your volunteers, Tim, is it possible that we direct these special sponsors into the handicap spaces, which they qualify for, and have something like a golf cart? That a volunteer could shuttle them, so we limit the amount of pedestrian traffic interaction?
I think that's a great idea.
I love the idea. I, I'm sure it's possible.
All right. Does, do any of the council members have any more discussion? Would someone like to make a motion, then?
This is under C then, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, so the motion does not include any of the requests regarding a Lake Street parking because it just came in?
Right.
So for clarification, we would want to know as a part of your motion whether you're including that or not.
All of the protocols, or if we leave that one out, just say, "as proposed," minus whatever you'd like the motion to be.
I'd go ahead and make the motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris Street and Cass Street from 6:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. on Thursdays from July 23, 2020 to August 27, 2020. And for, if the organizer comes back with an idea for a shuttle service, that city staff would, would help him implement that.
I would second that. Alunbus?
Councilmember Alunbus?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers? Mayor Foulkes?
Yes. Motion carries.
The next request is for the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on August 1st, 2020 for the After 26 Depot Music Festival.
I would make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris Street and Cass Street from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on August 1st, 2020 for the After 26 Depot Music Festival.
This is Councilmember King. I would support that motion.
Councilmember Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers? Alunbus?
Yes.
Mayor Foulkes?
Yes. Motion carries.
The next request is to approve the signed request for the Farmer's Market, subject to the conditions noted.
I, I would go ahead and make that motion to approve the signed request for the Farmer's Market, subject to the conditions noted.
I would second that. Alunbus?
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers? Alunbus?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
Mayor Foulkes?
Yes. Motion carries.
The next request is to approve the general locations for the installation of the future sculpture gift from the Cadillac Arts Council.
So the, I'm trying to pull it up as we're talking here. The council packet includes communication introducing, introducing the item. Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. It's been printed out. Thank you, Owen. I'm looking for it, Alan. So this, this was an item that came right after we finalized our agenda in terms of getting the details together, printed out and or emailed to everybody, is a copy of the communication titled "Acceptance for Locations for Public Art." In summary, the city Cadillac is very fortunate and lucky to have such an active arts council. The arts council has essentially come into having two sculptures that they would love to donate to the city. In working with staff, they have identified with us a couple of different locations throughout the community in which we believe would be appropriate to have public art put in, put in place. So if you look at basically the second page of the attachment, it identifies these locations in general. And the reason why they're in general is because the actual precise, you know, to-the-foot spot hasn't, hasn't been quite figured out yet. But the locations that we're asking council to, to approve tonight as the potential spots would be, generally speaking, along Lake Street on the west side, near the Rotary Performing Arts Pavilion is one spot. As well as across the street from the Sound Garden, so that would be on the south side of Chestnut Street, generally somewhere just west of the crosswalk area of the McKellup Crosswalk space. There are a couple of images of what the current sculptures look like. The representative from the arts council that's been working closely with the city has also mentioned a possibility in the future that perhaps there will be the ability of having the art maybe switched out if a leasing-type program or some other program in the community becomes, becomes available, where patrons of the arts might, might enter into an agreement where they will pay to have new pieces of art brought, brought in in exchange for those that are currently in place. So that's something that we might be able to look forward to in the future as well. The only ask for the city would be for us to have our public works department put down the concrete pad in which the art would be anchored to. We've done that in the past for public art along Chestnut Street. We've also done that for disc golf tees, when some of those have been also donated to the city in the past as well. So it's not a, not an unusual request for us to approve. I believe we have a representative from the Cadillac Arts Council on the line with us. Not certain if I missed anything, or if you want to cover anything else, Mr. Brown?
I think that about covers it, Marcus. This, this money all became available due to the, the lack of being able to spend the money during the Festival of the Arts this year. We did have, I think, a successful Festival of Arts reimagined, but we didn't have to pay out a lot of money. So we did not want to, we thought it was an opportunity for us to inject some art, permanent art installations within the city. We also paid for the mural that was painted on the building next to Up North Arts. So that was, I think, a good use of the money that we've had, and we're excited to be able to do that in Cadillac.
Thank you, Paul, and we are grateful to the Arts Council for making the decision to be able to place more art and, you know, like with the murals, more fun and, and excitement about visiting places around the city. So thank you and the council.
Yes, the murals look great, and thank you to David Petrokovich for the art. It's greatly appreciated. We need more murals. They look great.
The, the only question I have, because I think it's absolutely wonderful, is the comment of Permanent. Does the council still, if, if the art council came to us and said they want to swap out art in these locations at a later date? If there were other donations in the city wanted and its discretion to move it, are we still within our purview to do that?
So-
I was going to say, I would think so.
All right, at this point, we're, we have, we're purchasing these two pieces of art and donating them to the city. So these particular pieces of art, we're not intending to swap out. There are sometimes opportunities for, oftentimes, I know that David, the artist David Petrokovich, many times he will enter in agreements with locations and municipalities where they will rent pieces of his art for a certain amount of time, either a year or three years or whatever it is. Then they pay an annual fee for that. That's not uncommon in the art world of this type of art. Our committee wanted to purchase the pieces, but certainly that's something down the road if we wanted to add more, and certainly our intent to have more public art in Cadillac. That's one way to do it, is to, and if you have the, it's cheaper that way per year, but over the long haul, it's probably more expensive if you're constantly renting art. It just depends on, on the cost of the pieces and the municipalities wish to or not to have changing art in their town. So again, these two pieces, we're purchasing and donating to the city. I think down the road, we can look at the possibility of more purchases or getting local people to donate or help us rent. It just depends on the situation at the time.
And I would, I would kind of envision that, rather than moving these two pieces of art, perhaps we put down a pad somewhere where that would be the one spot that if the arts council or whomever would like to rotate pieces of art, maybe it would be at that spot. So, but we can cross that bridge, certainly when we get to that.
But I think the fact that it's donated to the city answers my question.
It does, yes, yeah. Okay. Would someone like to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the general locations for the installation of the future sculptor gift from the Cadillac Arts Council. Alunbus here.
This is Councilmember King. I will support that motion.
Councilmember Shippers? Alunbus?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Foulkes?
Yes. Motion carries.
Moving on to appointments, being recommended to approve the reappointment of Carl Gensink to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term to expire on July 20th, 2023.
I'd make a motion to approve the reappointment of Carl Gensink to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term to expire on July 20th, 2023.
This is Councilmember King. I would support that motion.
Councilmember Alunbus?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers? Mayor Foulkes?
Yes. Motion carries.
Also being recommended to approve the reappointment of Ronald Perulski to the Cadillac Housing Commission for a five-year term to expire on July 20th, 2025.
Alunbus here. I'd make a motion to approve the reappointment of Ronald Perulski to the Cadillac Housing Commission for a five-year term to expire on July 20th, 2025.
Okay.
There you go.
Caught you. I was reading. This is Councilmember King. I'll support that motion.
Councilmember Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers? Alunbus?
Yes.
Mayor Foulkes?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay.
Okay. That takes us to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Just a couple items tonight. The first one is a recommendation regarding the purchase of an eight-inch water meter. The city Cadillac uses census meters. They are the brand that we use to measure the water usage of our water and sewer customers. We need to replace an eight-inch meter. The city, unless the meter is found to be damaged or broken due to negligence of the customer itself, the city otherwise pays for all of the costs of replacing outdated meters. And then that cost is just recouped through the fees collected through the system itself. One of the largest meters in our system, again, it's an eight-inch meter, is needed for replacement for fire, for a fire protection line for housing development within the city. Aetna Supply is a sole-source provider of census equipment in Michigan, and we did include a letter from Aetna that specifies that, which is why this evening, we are requesting for a waiver of bid, followed by consideration of approval of $15,800 to Aetna Supply of Grand Rapids for the replacement of the eight-inch line meter. Our utilities director is in this meeting, even if you can't physically see him. So certainly feel free to ask him any more specific questions that were not covered in the communication.
Hey, Jeff. Brian Alunbus. Where's, where's this meter located at?
This is for Pheasant Ridge.
Okay. How old is the other one we're replacing? Is it just worn out?
It's original, so 90s.
Okay.
1990s.
Normal replacement time, wear and tear, or?
I didn't hear what you said, sir.
Is it normal wear and tear, or is this just time to replace, or what's the reasoning?
Normal wear and tear, and right now, it's getting very, it will not read what the, our auto-
our auto reader. It's just starting to fail communication-wise.
Okay.
To even get the MXU to get it out to us, so.
Sounds like it's time. Anything, Steve?
No.
I'd make a motion to waive competitive bidding on the purchase of a replacement eight-inch water meter.
This is Councilmember King. I would support, well, I think I, I first would support the waiver of bid.
Competitive bidding.
Competitive bidding as a sole source provider. And I could switch that to be my motion that you can support if you'd like.
Okay. I'll support that.
Okay, so which one?
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers? Ellen Boss?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Councilmember Ellen Boss?
Uh, make a motion to award the purchase of an eight-inch replacement meter to Aetna Supply of Grand Rapids, Michigan in the amount of $15,800.
This is Councilmember King. I would support that motion.
Councilmember Shippers? Ellen Boss?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. I have just another COVID-19 related update after checking our District Health Department 10 site this afternoon. As of July 20th, 2020, total number of COVID-related cases for the multiple county area is 981. For Wexford County, it's 44 out of the 981. Total probables is 90. For our county, it's 13. Total deaths is 21. For our county, it's four. And total recovered is, out of the 981, is 458. And for our county, it's 12. As reported previously, operationally, we are basically up to, up to normal operational standards. We are following COVID response plan for anyone that's interested in seeing it. It is available online and certainly we can print people a copy of it if they want to. But masks are required when you come in. So if you are a customer, a resident, a visitor, a guest, you do have to have one. And if you don't have one, we're happy to provide you with a disposable one. And we kindly ask everybody to, to wear it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Marcus. So that moves us to the adoption of a resolution this evening?
Yes. So Mayor and members of the city council, the first item is regarding approval of a temporary construction license and introduction of an ordinance to approve a solar easement agreement. Owen, is it possible to get that graphic up of Mitchell Bentley?
This one?
That one. Perfect.
Of course.
Thank you. Have you guys, do you guys, you guys can't see it? Oh, yeah, you can see it too. Great. Awesome. Worked better than I thought. So, yes. So this is with respect to the Consumers Community Solar Garden Project. It's something that I believe everybody's very much familiar with. It is an image of the Mitchell Bentley property in our industrial park, and the graphic represents the area of where the solar farm easement is going to be. That's where the solar panels likely should be located. That's the bottom left corner. It also shows essentially the area of the construction license, which is temporary, that you're being asked to approve tonight, as well as an access slash utility easement, which is permanent, but it's also non-exclusive. That's going to be a part of all of the legal steps that we're moving forward. This, I believe, is basically going to be the last, the last legislative-related item that city council's going to need to get involved with when it comes to specifically the solar gardens project on this property. Down the road, when hopefully the other areas that I did not talk yet about, those being the one right in the middle, it says Mitchell Bentley Property, 8.4 total acres, and even the potential Western Concrete property of somewhere, somewhere down the road that looks to be developed, ultimately they'll be back and forth, back in front of council accordingly. But tonight, we're asking council to approve the, the access agreement, the license agreement, as well as to set the public hearing for your meeting in August, which I believe is the third Monday.
Seventeenth.
The 17th for the easement, for consumers to be able to put the project in place. In terms of consumers and their timing, they are waiting on parts essentially and will be very eager to get started as soon as they have the equipment in. The global pandemic is the cause for the reason why there hasn't been that activity on site yet. But it's anticipated to be able to be started later this summer, early this fall, and we're all, you know, as soon as we know when, you guys will know when as well.
If no discussion, I would go ahead and make the motion to adopt the resolution authorizing temporary construction license for a portion of 514 Wright Street. This is Councilmember King.
Ellen Boss supports.
Councilmember Ellen Boss?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers? Mayor Felkins?
Yes, motion carries.
The next item is simply Mayor and members of council setting the public hearing as I presented for the easement.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance to approve granting easement to Consumers Energy Company for a solar energy farm and set a public hearing for August 17th, 2020.
Ellen Boss supports.
Councilmember Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers? Ellen Boss?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. The next item is with regard to a resolution that designates a social district and defines a commons area. As folks may or may not have heard, as reported by the media, the governor signed into law approximately a couple of weeks ago, the ability for municipalities to designate a social district. And Owen, if you could pull the map up, that would be page one of the two-page attachment. And so generally speaking, what, what this does, and I know I'm probably going to need the city attorney to clarify a little bit of what I'm going to say, but what this does is it allows for restaurants, as a, for instance, or places that sell alcohol, to be able to sell to customers that can take out their drinks and then consume them anywhere within than the common area that is set up within the social district. So before I go to that next slide, the first thing that you do is you set up the social district location itself. The current state law has some hurdles within it. The hurdles are such that the businesses that can participate must be contiguous, must be first within the social, social district itself, and then two, contiguous or touching the common area that's within the district. And there may be more, multiple common areas, but needs to be contiguous to the common areas within the district. We are adopting this by resolution, which means that it's, it's a one-and-done, but it can also be adjusted, modified rather easily as well as a one-and-done. What I'm getting at is that given this is all very new, there's a pretty good chance that the, the state may clarify, may even amend the rules that they set up establishing how municipalities can establish both the districts themselves and the common areas over time, because it's certainly the intent of the staff to try to make this as open as an area is absolutely possible. But because of how the statute is written and because some of the roads, such as Mitchell Street, are not under our authority, it's actually a little bit limiting, unfortunately, to businesses that are on the east side of Mitchell Street. So that being said, if you can switch to slide number two. Slide number two shows now the actual common area that is within the overall district. So the only difference between these two slides is that the overall district in the first slide showed how it went up to the right-of-way on Mitchell Street on the west side. We don't believe that we currently can extend that boundary across the state roadway, otherwise we would have done that. If that can change, if we get word that that can change, if it matches up nicely with the planned public meeting, we'll have it on your agenda. And if it doesn't, then I'll ask the mayor to call a special meeting for us to, to do in order to make that modification without any delay.
Then we'd simply move it up a block?
And then, yeah, we could simply move it up a block or, or add different zones, whatever, whatever we want to do, we can, we can look at doing. So again, the purpose and the intent of all this is so that people can walk out of contiguous businesses with alcoholic-related beverages, consume them within the area. Additionally, it allows for those businesses that are contiguous to the area to actually serve people in that area. So if you're sitting there, as a, for instance, you could hypothetically have a server come up to you and take your order, whether it's for food, whether it's for drinks or, or all the above, and, and provide that to you. The area that's, that's highlighted within that, that, that district is essentially the area that we commonly, no pun intended, refer to as Cadillac Commons. So it's generally speaking, all of the placemaking, people gathering locations, the market, the pavilion, the city park, the plaza, and the future Trailhead site are all encompassed within that zone. So the city council this evening is being asked to consider approving this resolution. At the same time, I can also advise that I've been working with staff on a, a sort of a application program where businesses that currently have sidewalk cafes can extend those cafes as long as they could, as long as they provide us with a note from a property owner in which they don't own that property, but they want to extend the cafe in front of that person's property or behind that person's property. If they give us the note from that property owner that says that that's okay with them, we would be willing to administratively sign off on the extension of that cafe. Obviously, if they're going to serve alcohol, that would still be subject to review from the Michigan local, Michigan Liquor Control Commission. But we're excited that we're able to try to do something during this time to help out businesses that are looking at finding themselves wanting or needing more outdoor dining experiences. Likewise, I'd like to say publicly as well, you know, we do have facilities, as the city council authorized this evening for a private retirement party. We have the market at Cadillac Commons. I could envision perhaps, you know, a Taste of Cadillac special event. You know, we have the facilities. We just need somebody to organize, organize the activity. You could have, you know, multiple restaurants regardless of where they're located, solicit the city to ask for permission to do a special dining event. Maybe it's, you know, one-and-done or maybe it's every other weekend. I, you know, I don't know. But we have these facilities available. We have the park spaces available, and that's something that people can anytime ask us for permission to do, depending what they're asking for, of course, it might require council approval. But, you know, those are things that we're happy to work with people on, so.
So we could drink beer in the city park all the time?
Through the social district program.
That's, that's what I mean. I don't know. We're a pretty conservative little town.
You'd have to, I believe you'd have to bring it or you'd have to purchase it through one of the.
Right. Somebody, we would buy it from whoever was there in the area.
That is the new state law.
And, and I will say that the city still has to establish some maintenance of that area, including hours of operation, so. And, and I can say I was impressed with Grand Rapids is doing that right now. So if you sit at a table, I'm going to use the example of in front of the fireplace, which would be part of the common area. Literally, the clam might serve you a draft beer, but the elks may bring your lunch out to you or one of the other establishments. So it's really a responsible and coordinated effort for the economy. It was spectacular.
Okay. I think it's, I think it's great. Thank you so much for taking the time and thinking this through so that we can bring the opportunity to Cadillac.
Still might be a work in progress.
It's okay. It's okay.
But we're getting it started.
One step forward.
Yep.
I'd go ahead.
Good question. Marcus, are we going to be doing anything like to facilitate this, putting out more picnic tables or making our tables in the market available or anything like that?
So we, we actually don't own any market tables. Those that had been there in the past for prior activities, including a council meeting that we did last summer, were, were all rented. We actually rented them through CAPS. So it would be incumbent upon whomever the organizers would be if they're looking at using specifically like a venue space like the market to, to bring their own equipment to facilitate that type of activity. That being said, we do have the ability to, you know, move picnic tables around the community from, you know, one park location to another. And if they're not already sort of sprinkled about in the city park area and lakefront area, we can certainly look at, at doing that, especially if we have some of the eligible prop, eligible restaurants indicate that they're looking at, at actually moving the program forward.
Okay.
This is Councilmember King. I'll go ahead and make the motion to adopt the resolution designating a social district and defining commons area. Cadillac Plaza, Social District Number One.
This is Councilmember Engels. I support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers? Ellen Boss?
No.
Engels?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, this evening we do in our packet have the minutes, lots of minutes actually, from the Cadillac Wexford Airport Authority. I think they got caught up on their minutes, so. And the historic districts commission's last minutes for us to just review. And with that, we will go to the remaining public comment. We do ask that you follow the same rules as the first. Hearing no one, we'll close public comment and move to the good of the order if anyone has anything this evening.
I've got three short ones. Owen, just a couple of quick ones for you, big guy, okay? In one of the other meetings, you mentioned that some of the 3.2 million road grant was used in the pavilion. Do you know how much?
The three.
3.2 million dollar grant.
Not used in the pavilion. Plaza.
Plaza, excuse me. Plaza. You know how much?
Million.
One million. Okay. I was in here then and maybe wasn't paying attention. Who, who okay something like that?
Let me, is this okay to have the discussion right now? I mean, I'm happy to. I mean, I'm happy to...
Yep.
Yeah.
It's fine.
The DDA agreed to commit their captured tax dollars to support that amount of debt to complete that project. So the city issued the bonds through the typical authorization process, and then the DDA actually took action to commit their captured tax dollars to make that down to us.
And they paid for it.
What?
Yeah, through the tax cap. Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Two more, two short ones, two good ones. Earlier, Richard Schultz at the Historical Museum contacted me about a celebration for the Sesquicentennial. I believe you were contacted.
Yes.
I thought it was a great idea. I also think it's a great idea, it would be next year technically, but I also think it would be a great idea to delay it to '22 because of the virus. Call it the Sesquia Plus One or something like that, a week-long celebration. It's just in the very early planning stages. If you want to get involved, contact me, Richard Schultz, and if you have any ideas, step forward. We appreciate it. And I'm also happy to read in the paper today, the theater is to reopen, which is a big deal to me, and they rehired the original manager who was there, which is an excellent move. So, there we go.
Thank you. Marcus?
I was going to mention also, Councilmember Allenbaugh, the same thing you just mentioned regarding the 150th anniversary. Part of what I think the future committee that's not yet established, that I think is going to become established by a bunch of community stakeholders, is going to need to be a determination of the celebration itself, because next year does mark the 150th for essentially the founding of the Clam Lake Village. The incorporation of the city is like five years later. So we're, I think, 1877 or something, somewhere around there. Either way, it's a huge, you know, number, whether it's specifically for the city or just the founding of Clam Lake, we're certainly a part of all of that. It's part of our namesake, and so it'll be interesting to see how it all comes together, especially in light of, in light of the pandemic and...
I was here for the first one. It was a bit of a big deal.
Yeah.
I don't think we'll be having a rock concert at the football field, but we have a pavilion that's even better.
Okay, there's one other thing I also wanted to bring up this evening. I know that the governor has extended, all things COVID, has extended the possibility for us to be virtual for our council meetings, and while we've been able to get us back in this room, I know that we've had some technological challenges for the people to really be able to hear us with us sitting here and not being virtual. So I wanted to propose that we go back to that virtual meeting as long as we can or should, and wondered if you all would support that.
Yeah, I think that, you know, from a logistical perspective, it certainly would be helpful if we picked one way or another. Having the facilities, given that they're very small in size, open for public participation is, it's a non-starter. There's no room for the public to socially distance in this room, let alone for even staff. Normally, I'd have the full complement of staff in this room as well to do that. The governor last week extended the emergency order regarding remote meeting participation of local governments and other public bodies to coincide with her state of emergency. Her state of emergency now goes to about the middle of August. As anyone's guess as to whether or not that'll get further extended, and the thought was, unless there's a need for some kind of a special meeting where we also felt that we had to be in person to go back to the 100% virtual for all of us until this is lifted and we can get back to doing business as normal with people coming and attending our meetings normally.
Yeah. I would agree with the mayor of being here, listening to you guys. It's a lot easier to listen when we were all in a Zoom meeting than doing what I'm doing right now. So I would, there's definitely some challenges and sometimes where I couldn't quite hear what everybody was saying.
So is everybody agreeable to that?
This is Councilmember King. I don't have an objection to that, but I think there's benefits to us being together when we have the meeting. I just haven't been able to think it through.
Right.
And, you know, we've all received the complaints of, I even have texts tonight of people saying...
Can't hear.
Well, can't hear, but there's not a clear message on where you go on. They don't feel there's a clear message on where you go on to see it.
Okay.
I know we have the notices of how to connect, so there's that. I'm not objecting. I just haven't thought about it.
Okay.
I'm Ann Bivlin. I know.
Well, then, I would like to see us go back to the Zoom meetings, and if for some reason we do have to come together, then we'll just call that special meeting and we'll come together. For instance, if we have to go into closed session. But otherwise, I think that we are providing a better service to the community, as Robert just was able to experience tonight, that it is a better experience if we're all on the same platform, so...
And, you know, the meetings themselves, if you wish to participate in them, you need to join the meeting. We use the GoToMeeting app. You need to join the meeting. If you simply just wish to view and watch it, you know, even when we were doing it fully virtual before, it's still being broadcast live on the charter local government TV.
You would just do it the way you always did?
Yeah, you would still do it the way you always, you always did it. It's also still available for people to download or stream off of our CCTV website. So, you know, it depends. If you want to participate, you'd have to log in. If you just want to view, you can, you could still log in and not participate, but you could also just watch it on TV like you normally would. By going, you know, fully virtual, it will improve the audio quality for everybody and the visual quality for everybody. Otherwise, if you can see on your screens, it's, council, it's the sort of middle row, one from the right, that's what the public sees. It's just a static view of the whole room, which otherwise they'd be able to see everybody like you could see Councilmember Engels, you know, on the screen. So, look, I agree. I love meeting in person. I would much prefer to just meet in person, but it's also...
I would too. I prefer to be all of us right here, but, yeah.
Marcus, just for clarification, people can also call in, right? They don't need a computer or to use the link, correct?
That is correct. You could call in also. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. We'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you. You have to leave the closed session minutes here for CND.